Well, I worked out great. I was able to run upstairs and get a drink of lemonade and I'm ready to go.
Mine is boring.
Let's see.
It's not pulling up at all. Oh, really?
The one we don't have is Lars. We're all here. One, two, three, four, six. Since we're all here, we'll go ahead and get started. And with that, we'll call to order the regular meeting in West Valley City Council. We know we have six council members in attendance. Councilman Jake Vitissimano will not be with us this evening. And I'll read this notice pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined this meeting will be held electronically without an anchor location. Given the ongoing coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic, the city has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. So this meeting will be held electronically. Those who wish to view this meeting live can do so on YouTube at youtube.com user slash W V C T V. And to participate in the comment period or the scheduled public hearings, those are arranged through our city recorder. And that's the requirement we have to give public notice. Nicole, I think that our next isn't it about two weeks that we would have to decide again if we're going to continue?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And so in two weeks, we will have a discussion about whether we could or should have an anchor location, but recognizing that the rate of coronavirus spread as a percentage and as pure numbers has increased dramatically. And we're not even sure that the second wave has even hit yet. And so it could be, given the timing of the vaccines inoculations being available, could be another four to five months. So we need to look at what we want to do, maybe decide how we handle that over that time. With that then, we have a video. I think police video. Is there a new one?
Mayor, I believe it is a new one. We'll see. I think I've written it up right now.
Okay.
Some people dream of better communities, a better world. Some people dream of making a difference. The West Valley City Police Department is the place to put dreams into action. We work side by side with our community to make neighborhoods safer and our community stronger. We have the support of our police chief and local leaders. They ensure we are well-trained, well-equipped, and able to be our very best. Our department is just the right size, just big enough to give you all of the opportunities and just small enough to feel like family. Here, we support each other, we hold each other accountable, and together we bring respect to this great profession. The West Valley City Police Department is one of the only nationally accredited agencies in Utah. We are doing it right. Be part of what we're doing, be part of the good things happening. Come and be part of the West Valley City Police Department.
Hmm. Very nice. Okay. Then let's move along on our agenda. We have the approval of the minutes of October 20th. And if they're okay, why we need a motion on them. Oh, we need a motion even if they aren't okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry. If I can interrupt for a second, I might be wrong in this, but Nicole, were we having somebody in the special recognition section or did that not come through? I know we had some last minute discussion.
Yes, sir. Special recognitions, and we do have a gentleman here to speak to the council.
Okay, Mayor, I'm assuming, I think we forgot to talk about this in our three o'clock meeting. Did you know this was happening?
No.
This is the sacred circle.
It's what?
Oh, sorry, the Sacred Circle Clinic that I spoke to you about last week, Mayor.
Ah, we're doing that here. That's, that's right. The boy, I looked at the agenda and didn't see that. This is council members, an important issue because we have the opportunity to hear from, I believe the correct term is governor of and I believe that he will introduce himself. I've not met him, but from one of the Native American tribes here in Utah, and we're very privileged to have him participate with us. And so with that, is it Mr. Steele?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir, for joining us. And so we'll turn some time over to you.
Okay, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to the, to you and your council. And let me give you a brief history of our tribe. The Confederate tribe of the Goshute is located approximately 70 miles south of Wendover. And half of the reservation system in Utah, in Topeka and Juab County, and the other half is in Nevada. So we're far away from all the the commodities that we need to have on the reservation to survive. So medical needs was very high on a priority since we're a long ways from Salt Lake, three hours from Salt Lake, three hours from Alco. So we decided that we need to provide better served medical services to our people. So we worked with the governor and your folks to see if we could do something to help out the poor public in terms of medical services. So we came to this venture of maybe this is what we could do. So we, we had, we went and worked to establish our sacred care health center in Salt Lake. And we got that done. And now we're looking to have a clinic there in West Valley to help some of those medical demands that the public has put on our medical services units. So we're a small tribe, approximately 620 members of the tribe, about 113,000 acres of reservation land. So yeah, we have our medical services. We have a local clinic, but it does not provide any professional services. So we decided that we've been taking our people to Salt Lake or to Alco. And that's a long ways out. So with establishment of our clinic there, you know, it helps the city, it helps the tribe. So to provide better services to the public. So I want to recognize my five-member council members. I'm the chair, Rupert Steele, Paul Pete, and my vice chair, Mary Pete Freeman, is a council member. Hope Jackson, the council member, Richard Henryad is our council member. So those are the five governing members of the governing body of the council. So we operate underneath the same Robert rules and orders that all organizations operate under. So that's just a short, brief history. I want to thank you and your staff for working with the tribe in getting this clinic up and running and also Governor Herbert and his staff. So I want to thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Well, Council Chair Steele, we appreciate your personally joining us as representative of your Native American tribe. And we appreciate the unique heritage that you provide and the culture you add to the whole state of Utah as well as our city. So thank you very much for joining us. And do we have someone else that is going to make some comments here?
Yes, we have Josh from Sacred Care Health Center.
Yes, he's online with us as well.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council members and Chairman Steele, it's good to see you again. I feel like it's been a while since we've seen each other, but good to see you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm representing our executive director, Lorena Horse, who has asked me to step in for her and she looks forward to meeting you all. It's very exciting. It's very exciting for us to come into and expand our services into West Valley City. We do, like Chairman Steele said, we have a clinic in downtown Salt Lake. It's located in the same building as the immigration building or immigration services in the consulate. And we recently purchased, I think it was an Everest College over off 3500 South and 3200 West over by that Holiday Gas Station and CVS. So it's, I think it's a, it's the triangular pie shape building, we love to call it. So very excited, we purchased, the tribe purchased that building and we have then since renovated it and created a wonderful opportunity for services. As Chairman Steele stated, we are a Native American-owned clinic and we seek and to serve all Native American tribal members. Not only are our CTGR members, but all Native Americans. We also accept Medicaid. We are a sick, what's called a 638 contract, which allows us to serve Medicaid patients and use that funding to further program our healthcare in Iwapa, Utah, over by Wendover and also all Native American services for our tribe. The services that we are excited to announce that we will be opening in November 9th is we will have a primary care facility that will seek pediatric internal medicine. All of our physicians actually speak Spanish or two of our physicians, I should say, speak Spanish in our primary care area. So we feel like it'll be a great service to West Valley. We also are offering a podiatry provider, a dental clinic that does adult and pediatric physical therapy, behavioral health, and pharmacy services. So we really look forward to opening up that building and invite each of you to come and see it. I know, Mr. Mayor, we've invited you to the ribbon cutting and if, if allowed and if the time is available, we would love to have you there to tour the site itself. But again, very excited. The one, the one thing that's neat about our services is we really try to seek after and provide the best healthcare for the underserved and the underinsured. We even offer a transportation service. And as, as we've been looking at the West Valley section, we've really worked well with Stewart Health in Granger to partner with them, to collaborate with them and let them know that we are their friends and partners and not their competitors. We, we really want to bring the best healthcare we possibly can to West Valley City. So with that, I appreciate the time and if there's any questions, happy to answer anything. But again, invite you all to come see the building and, and see the beautiful things that, that the tribe has created.
Very good. Thank you. And yes, they mentioned that, but they hadn't given the time and so we're trying to arrange schedules so that that will work out.
Appreciate that.
And glad to have you here in West Valley and we look forward to this very specialized, unique way of adding to our community.
Thank you.
With that then, Council Chair Steele is still on with us, but thank you for being with us and Mr. Anderson and we'll now move forward on there. And Nicole and Wayne, thank you for reminding me of that. You really ought to put it on the agenda because if I can't read it, I forget it. So which is really hard for my wife since she can't write everything down. So with that then, we'll go to our minutes now. Move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Properly for us, any comments? Hearing none. Then without objection, we will consider the minutes approved. Hearing no objections, that is unanimous. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation declaring November 1st, 2020 is extra mile day in West Valley City. I don't believe that we have anyone online to comment on this. And so we will proceed forward. We will sign this and recognize this effort in our city here. And I think that's the way we were approaching it, if I remember from last week. So we'll get that signed and distributed to those interested. And from there.
We probably should mention it'll be November 1st of 2020.
Yes. Okay. Anything else? If not, then on to our comment period. And Nicole, I think we typically have one or two. Do we have?
Yes, sir. We have two attendees tonight.
Okay, both of them have spoken to the council before?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's bring the first one on.
The first one is Jim Beesock. Jim, your microphone should be able to be unmuted now.
Good evening, Mayor. Yeah, you know, there's gonna be one. I want to say great job on the new Public Works Building. It used to be an embarrassment to West Valley City. I've regularly gone over that area. My niece dances in that area for a dance company and passing that building, it used to be one of the worst buildings in that area. Now it's, if it's not the best, it is definitely one of the best. Huge improvement. Looks great. And I'm sure the surrounding facilities love to see how it looks. Just a reminder also, channel 17, you can view the council meetings, the government channel. So you don't have to have a computer, you can watch it on TV. Then the other thing, on the, in the study meeting, you guys talked about West Valley Police Department and the charges that they charge. I like the consistency thing. If we're going to charge our residents a police officer when code enforcement does an abatement and charged $50 an hour for each officer, the businesses should be paying at least the same. That's all I have tonight. Stay safe, stay strong.
Thank you very much. Nicole, the next one?
Next, we have Jason Lovato. Jason, you should be able to unmute your microphone now.
Hello.
Welcome.
Okay, I'm back to the same thing again. I'm here talking about the police towing rotation. So I just want to go over just a few more highlights and hopefully I can maybe get some answers from the mayor and the the city council for the industry. Property and investment. People in general choose to invest in properties as investments. A good, well-thought-out investment can be an asset to a family or families. A bad investment can bankrupt or destroy a family. It is a requirement of the West Valley City Police Department to have property in West Valley City to be on the rotation. Why, I ask? Well, the only benefit to this action that I can see is property tax to the city and the business license fees to the city. If you limit the amount of companies to 15, you will only be able to generate revenue from 15 companies. Revenue generation is approximately $4,500 annually from 15 companies. If you keep it open to all companies and you keep it equal opportunity, it has the possibility of a $15,000 revenue generation for business licensing. Property owners as well as leases incur a sizable amount of money invested into a property. Money that is spent to abide by all of the requirements of the city. And in this case, West Valley City PD. Towing companies doing business in West Valley City have property owned or leased must make the best business decisions possible to stay in business. No towing company is going to want to invest in property purchase or lease if the police department limits the police rotation to 15 companies. Another point I would like to touch on is property taxes. The average property tax is around $9,000 per acre. If you limit the towing rotation to 15 companies, the amount of revenue in the estimated to a estimated of $135,000 a year. If the police department keeps an equal opportunity and keeps it open to where anyone can apply, there's an estimated potential of $450,000 in tax revenue. See, there is no, there is no minimum requirement or maximum requirement. It does have rules and regulations that are required by planning and zoning. Talking about properties here, but West Valley PD goes above and beyond those requirements, meaning this takes extra time, time that they are saying that they don't have to manage proactively towing companies. West Valley PD is doing yard inspections. Why? This is the job of the Utah State Tax Commission. Towing coordinators would have more time for other police tasks not related to towing if they were not trying to do the job of the Utah State Tax Commission. The Utah State Tax Commission is the officiating body that approves state tax impound yards. Another question that I have is why does West Valley City have three towing coordinators? Utah Highway Patrol only has one. Murray only has one. Salt Lake City PD only has one. South Salt Lake only has one and UPD Unified Police Department only has one coordinator. Yet they want to limit the amount of people that are on the rotation to 15 because they can't proactively do their job. Yet they have three towing coordinators that manage the towing rotation where in other cities, there's only one. In a previous meeting, I believe there was mention of money. The towing, the towing companies weren't able to make enough money within the city. Well, towing companies, first of all, should, their only business should not be towing for police agencies. But it should not be the concern of the city, how much money a towing company makes or doesn't make. Now, this is kind of a touchy subject here, but steering is illegal. It is, it is not right or just for any city official to have any type of meeting or backdoor deal with a towing company. I believe that this is happening. I also believe that the rules and regulations are being changed to accommodate a certain few. The steering or changes being made are in reference to the city's contract with one company. If, it is my belief that between this company and the touring coordinator is the reason for the proposed change limiting the tow rotation to 15 companies. I would just like to say in closing that the industry needs answers. I don't have a property in West Valley City and I'm not on the city's rotation. I do plan on getting property in West Valley and I do plan on being on the rotation. However, if this, if there's a limitation on the towing rotation to 15 companies, that does not allow me to recoup my cost in any way to do business in West Valley City. So I'm just asking the, you know, the mayor and the city council for answers because I believe that the, the industry deserves to have the answers and that's all that I have for my minutes tonight. I'll be looking forward to an answer to my questions if, if that's possible.
Okay, thank you. Nicole, is that everyone that was online to speak to the council on public comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then following our agenda, next would be comments from our city manager.
No comments this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
To the city council. Hearing no comments. Then let's go on with our agenda. Resolution 20 dash 166. Approve a grant agreement with the State of Utah Department of Heritage and Arts. This resolution is for $55,000. It is distributed under the Federal Cares Act. And they're going to do coronavirus prevention messaging at the Maverick Center in 2020. And so that is the issue before us. Probably enough, it's pretty straightforward to the council.
Move for approval of resolution 20 dash 166.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments? Hearing none. We'll go to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Ling? Yes. Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to resolution 20 dash 167 to approve two sub-grant agreements between West Valley City and Salt Lake County governing the disbursement and use of the home investment partnership funding. This is a project that we do regularly. These funds become available through a federal grant. And we have funds available for housing rehabilitation and down payment assistance. Obviously, in this year of a bit of austerity, it's $198,000, a little bit less than we've gotten in previous years, but still a very significant help to those who can qualify for these funds. And with that, to the council for any additional comments on it or motions.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of resolution 20 dash 167.
Second.
Properly before us, any further comments? Hearing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hugh?
Aye.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have resolution 20 dash 168. Next, we have resolution 20 dash 168. This is to adopt our 2020 annual report on the moderate income housing plan. Uh, this is a report required by the state. And, uh, from all municipalities, uh, we prepare a in-depth report every five years. But there are items that are required to be updated each year. And so a revised estimate of the need for moderate income housing and at different levels. And so this meets the requirements of the state law and provides us with general information. And so, uh, they have a number of recommendations. And then we respond, updating how we are, uh, dealing with each of those recommendations. So that kind of, uh, gives a flavor for what this issue is. With that then, to the council for any additional comments or for a motion. Or?
I, uh, okay, I move forward, uh, for the resolution 20 dash 168.
Second.
Properly before us. Hearing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, then we have, uh, one, another one of our routine items. For resolution 20 dash 169. Authorize the city to release a slope easement at Wood Hollow Estates Phase One. It was, uh, a, uh, an easement that was granted at the end of a dead end street in order to manage that with the rest of the subdivision now, uh, being recorded and, uh, the road extended. It's currently under construction. The slope easement is no longer necessary. So this will be removed. Its purpose is, uh, now over. So it's outlived its need. And with that, to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of resolution 20 dash 169.
Second.
Properly before us. Hearing no further comments, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. As is our tradition, uh, for the city council that normally meets every Tuesday evening. Uh, next Tuesday, which is voting day, we will not hold our meetings uh, due to the election and of course, the interest of the public and of the council members in that particular night and how it will impact, uh, our country, our state and our community. So we will meet again in two weeks. And with that, any other comments, things that we need to mention before adjourning? With that then, stay safe, stay healthy. And let's have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in, excuse me, without objection, we will stand adjourned. Hearing no objection, it's unanimous. Thank you.